I'd like to call this meeting to order, and before we get started, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Commissioner Gordon Wright. Thank you very much.
I'll read the emergency evacuation procedure. In the event of an emergency evacuation, an alarm will sound. Everyone should exit the building by way of the nearest stairwell in a safe and effective manner. If the nearest stairwell is blocked by smoke, use the other stairwell. Do not use the elevator. Once you have reached the main floor, follow the exit signs to exit the building and quickly proceed away from the building. Please be mindful of others evacuating and of emergency vehicles.
Thank you, John. Sorry I'm late. You haven't approved the minutes yet, have you? I'll call the meeting to order. You have the minutes. And we have a correction to the minutes. Did everybody get a copy of that? Oh, this was a correction to the November. Any corrections or additions to the corrected minutes? Do I have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Minutes are approved for the November 29th meeting. No public hearings? Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Minutes to last month's meeting. Do you have any corrections, additions or corrections to last month's minutes? That'd be the meeting for February 27th. A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. That's then approval of the corrected minutes for November 29th. And last month's meeting, the minutes of February 27th, minutes have been approved. Preliminary plat, Hayden's Place off of Old Whites Mill Road by Amburn Builders. Doug?
Okay. Item B1. Hayden's Place has 21 lots, 11 with county road frontage, two flag lots and eight lots to be served off of common driveway easements. I'm just going to go through the history real quick before I read the outstanding items to be completed. The preliminary plat was originally approved in March of 2010 for 24 months. The preliminary plat expired in March of 2012. Let's see, in March of 2010, there was a final plat for Phase 1, which were the 11 road frontage lots. While the Phase 1 final plat was approved previously, the entire preliminary is being brought back for preliminary approval as the 11 road frontage lots were part of the original design and drainage plan. Excuse me. The outstanding items to be completed are on page 5. Number 1, copy of a maintenance agreement or property owners association documentation to be supplied to staff for review for any future final phases. Number 2, a pre-construction meeting that... Someone say something, I'm sorry. A pre-construction meeting is required prior to any onsite work. An erosion control plan and any state permits are to be supplied to staff. All instructions in the staff analysis for the construction of the common driveways, paving of the entrance and construction of all utility improvements. Number 3, the drainage tiles for all individual driveways and the two common driveways shall be determined by the project engineer and shall be noted on the final plat. At this time, all of the road frontage lots have homes, so they have tiles. It's just the remaining two lots or two common driveways. And Lot 12 is to have minimum floor elevations established by the project engineer and shown on the final plat. There were three or four other lots on the first phase that had minimum floor elevations that were determined, and they were on the plat. And they're in your packet if you want to look at them. They're actually on the second B1 plat, and they're very hard to read under the notes. I just wanted to mention it in case anybody was interested. That's all I have.
So Doug, explain to her again, you brought the drawing 1 because that shows it in respect the new lots, but we're actually doing the preliminary for the back portion?
Well, we're actually doing a preliminary for the whole thing. They could have probably done it either way. But we have all the engineering and soil information for the entire plat. And I just wanted to show you the lots in context to the preliminary. They did get a final plat on 1 through 11. The second B1 is a final plat. And I did lie to you. Lots 3 through 11 actually have houses on them. Lots 1 and 2 do not. But they're bringing this back, and I'm showing you the original preliminary plat so that the developer didn't have to go spend the money for another preliminary plat, just showing those lots taken out.
Got it. Any questions, Commissioner French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions. On page 3, you state that a T turnaround shall be required at the end of either common driveway. Does that mean either/or, is that each driveway or just one of them?
Both. Either as in both, yes.
Pardon me?
Both, both driveways.
Should it not say at the end of both common driveways? Either makes it sound like you can do either one of them. Just when I read that, I, you know, it was kind of vague to me. And the next question is on the outstanding items to be completed. Are most of these flagged developments like this? It states in there that there should be a maintenance agreement about road maintenance? In other words, in the one behind it, it states road maintenance agreement should be...
Yeah, the subdivision regulations require that anytime you have a private element, either a common...
But it doesn't state that in the Hayden Mill one, is there? It just says a copy of a maintenance agreement or property owners association documentation to be supplied to staff for review for any future final plats.
That's correct. I'm not sure what you don't understand.
What about the road maintenance agreement?
These are common driveways, they're not roads.
So there's no... I understand that, they're the common driveways. But there's no agreement that needs to be supplied with that as far as upkeep of those driveways?
That's what we're talking about, the maintenance agreement for the common driveways and the common element. There's a retention bond there also.
Is that inclusive in item 1?
Yes.
Anything else, Commissioner French?
Well, I just, I've got a problem with the wording in that because in the next one, it actually says a copy of a maintenance agreement for common driveway, shared septic system.
If you would like to amend whatever motion is going to be on the floor for approval, we can make that as part of the motion to specify maintenance agreement of the common driveways and the common elements.
The way I read that, it just states for future plats is all you need documentation. I don't know if... It may just be a point of semantics.
Why don't we just include as part of the question there, addition of parenthetical statement, including maintenance of the common driveways?
I just think it needs to be stated in there, just like the other.
Is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Commissioner McCall? I understand lots 1 through 11 are already recorded?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you, said these houses already own some of those lots?
Okay.
Yes.
Just from my knowledge, and I don't have a problem with this, but I noticed it's same surveyor on some of the ones in the past. Some of these flag lots, usually like, for example, 20 and 21, 21 owns this flag lot, correct? And then so, but having in the past, I guess it's six half dozen another, but like 20 has owned the flag, the stem in the past, hasn't it?
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter?
It doesn't matter. They can do it with the one in front, the one in the back.
Just for my knowledge.
Yeah.
Commissioner McCall?
Also, this is a preliminary where he'll be showing setbacks on the final and all that.
Yes.
Bruce, was that something that needed to be added?
Not at this time.
Not at this time.
There's a note, note number 4, that has setbacks.
As long as that specifies that's a loaned easement, not just a note saying it doesn't apply to that, then. So we shouldn't address lots 1 through 11 at all then, right?
But what you're doing is renewing a preliminary plat, actually not renewing your approval because it lapsed. This has basically come through already once, and it was approved and it lapsed. It's coming back after some of the frontage lots have already been finalized. So what you're doing is just reaffirming the approval.
Nothing has changed, except the front has been developed.
My motion to approve preliminary plat approval with addition of Commissioner French's concerns.
Okay. We have a second. We've got a second. All right, we have approval of the preliminary plat with an addition to the outstanding items to be completed. Copy of a maintenance agreement of property owners association documentation to be supplied to staff for review for any future plats, including or to include maintenance of common driveways. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Renewal of preliminary plat for Sparks Cabin sites off of Christie Lane in Laurel Valley.
You ready, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay. There are five new lots and one existing tract, which is a lane property to be served by a private easement. I'll go through the history again. The preliminary plat was approved in March 2010 for 24 months. It expired in March of 2012. The plat was then renewed for 12 months until March of 2013, and again for 12 months until March of 2014. The owner's requesting the renewal of the preliminary plat until March of 2015. Renewals are not that untypical. I'm not sure that's the right word, but Mr. Sparks has had some health issues, so that's the reason he's not performed. I don't know that he will now either, but they have requested the renewal. The outstanding items to be completed are on page 7. The variance consideration to allow for the five Sparks lots and lane property to be divided off of common driveway easement. The variance was granted in March of 2010. A copy of a maintenance agreement for common driveway, shared septic system and common area maintenance responsibility, suitable arrangements for maintenance of the private water distribution system. Number 3, property owners association documentation to be supplied to staff for review prior to final plat submission, inclusive of maintenance responsibility for these lots for the internal Laurel Valley roads. Number 4, pre-construction meeting is required prior to any onsite work and erosion control plan and any permits to staff. All instructions in the staff analysis for the construction of the common driveway and the paving of the entrance. Number 5, confirmation by Mr. Lane that he concurs with the division of the Sparks property and understands a limitation from additional lots off the common driveway easement. That was confirmed by Mr. Lane at the March 2010 meeting. Number 6, add access easement for common area below, shared septic easement on the plat, and specify on the plat that common area may also be used for future wells. And there was a lot of discussion about that back in 2010. And there's one additional item, and that's, it was included later. Number 7 would be the removal, the removal of the cabin that's sitting in the easement. It doesn't necessarily have to be moved off the property, it just needs to be moved out of the easement. It was moved there by a storm and has been sitting there for about four years now. There's pictures of it too, if you'd like to look at them. At the very last page. We've got an aerial view from the top. You can see the one cabin's out of alignment. And then if you look at the road picture, you can see that Mr. Lane's driveway actually has kind of been skirted around that last cabin. So essentially, the cabin needs to be moved before we would sign a final plat.
Any questions or comments? Commissioner McCall?
Photograph that you attached looks like that easement is called Mount Luke Way, is that right?
No, it's not public, it's private. The Mount Luke Way is below it, and that is...
Below this existing road bed?
Yeah.
It's not within that Mount Luke Way?
Mount Luke Way sits below the cabins, and there's a driveway that we're, that they're sharing. The one up here, Bruce? This is...
No, I'm talking about the one below the cabins there. No, that can't be. You look at that, how close it is behind that first cabin.
Bruce, those cabins, time to look at that driveway. Some cabins actually ties into the road.
Oh, that's incorrect. I see what you're saying. Yeah.
I'm talking about the road bed behind the houses.
I think it's just in the road bed. I don't think it's, I don't think it is an easement.
Well, what about this?
The name Mount Luke Road on there, actually, we've done some research, and we've talked to Ray Boswell. He's supposed to pull it off the GIS map, so you won't see it next time. That is not Mount Luke Road.
So that will not be a driveway shown?
It is incorrect, yeah. They've spent some time recently with Trevor here and with the GIS to get that name off that map.
But there is going to be, there's going to be an easement for that existing road bed to get that remaining property across the back, right?
That road has been abandoned, if I'm not mistaken.
You could get a vehicle up it, but not a nice car.
It is going to be abandoned?
Just because you show a road bed, even if it's an old, it might have been an old timbering road bed or something like that, doesn't mean that it's an easement that's accessing any other properties. The property you see actually in the back, that you see that old road bed going to, has frontage on another road.
This, what is labeled Mount Luke Way is not Mount Luke Way, and it's, that name is coming off the official GIS map. The road, as I understand it, was built by Mr. Sparks to put the cabins in originally because he did not have access at the time to Laurel Valley Road. They actually put a gate up so he could not use their roads. Things softened up over the years. They finally took their gate down, as long as he would pay maintenance agreement. He did on these three cabins, and then this road, it just fell into disrepair. It's not in an easement. It's just a service road or driveway.
I disagree with you, Mr. Lamb. It's not going to be labeled abandoned. It ought to still be an easement across those properties. So there's nothing to keep anybody from accessing below the common area there from there?
Other than they don't maybe have rights on it?
You'd need to say it on the map then, to be abandoned, or...
To be included with the lots, not in an easement.
Is there even a reason to show it on the plat?
It's a physical aspect of the land itself, and the surveyor showed it. It's an old road bed, and he just showed it as a physical aspect of the land. It doesn't have the character of an easement. It doesn't have a character of access to the other property beyond that. It's just there as a physical entity.
So it's not, it's not listed on the county roads?
No, it's not, it never was.
That's okay, that's...
If you know the history of Laurel Valley and that area, when it was platted, those roads shifted quite a bit when people put things in. This was not one of them, but it got mislabeled on our GIS.
The lane property that's at the end of these five cabins, if you look, Christie Lane is to the left, that's a Laurel Valley private road, and it's paved. Then a wide gravel road comes in front of these five cabins and goes to Mr. Lane's property. Mr. Lane's property in the past was two separate hotels built around the turn of the century. One stood for a long time and burned down. And the road that accessed the second road was called Mount Luke, and it came up through Christie Lane. This other one was mislabeled by the GIS department just when they did their history. Just when they went back, they mislabeled it, assuming this was the road, but it never was the road. Tater Sparks built that road just to build those cabins. That's why it's where it's at.
Commissioner McCall? Do I have a motion? Do I have further questions?
Yes, sir.
It's just, it is a renewal of a preliminary plat.
12 months, yes.
12 months.
Yes. I have a motion to renew the preliminary plat until March of 2015. And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Don't have it on the agenda, but under miscellaneous, before we jump into long range, Commissioner Caldwell has a recommendation he'd like to make.
I just wanted to make a recommendation to this commission. I see the chairman, Marlene Moon, has requested that Gordon Sead remain vacant until after April 17, 2014. And I was going to make the same motion, and just in his honor and memory of his service to this community and this commission. And also ask that when passes, that when it comes time for somebody to fill this position, they be seated somewhere else since we have room.
Is that in the form of a motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. We will all miss Commissioner Wright his service. John Longreach.
Okay. Long range, how I've got down, well, I will have a couple of items for staff reports, but what I want you to look at first is a preliminary discussion in workshop format. We're going to have a workshop next Thursday, and I want to get the format and the list of items to discuss nailed down tonight, if possible, so we can go into that one with a format for discussion. What I provided to you, and I provided it on the internet, had to email it to you because it was out a little late, is a list of 17 items. No need for me to, I think, go through those, other than to ask, is that complete, or do you want to add any to that? If you wish, you can also add at the workshop. It's just that I want to get a kind of a preliminary go-through on this list. Marlene, I think, did we provide copies up front? Okay.
Has everyone had an opportunity to kind of look over these items? John, I thank you for the, for the list. It's a rather comprehensive list. It will probably have to decide which ones of them we want to attack.
Well, I think we're, given that they were brought up in discussions in the past, these, you know, it's a matter of going through these items at the workshop. We're not going to make any decisions at the workshop. It's just giving me some indication of the ones that I need to work on more. I think we're going to have to address each one of those, and this is kind of a complicated situation, but we're going to have to address each one of those somehow during the discussions when we get to deciding anything on rural commercial.
Anyone have any questions or comments or feedback to to Mr. Lamb? Between now and next Thursday evening, I would suggest you to kind of take a few minutes and read through the list and maybe jot down any thoughts you might have so we can make as good a use of our time as possible.
I will flesh this out. You know how brief I am when I flesh things out. It's not going to be a two-page, or it's going to be quite a bit more, to give you a little bit more guidance in the discussion. And I will have, I'm hoping to have that available by tomorrow afternoon. If not, then it will be Monday. There are a few things that have come up lately that I've had to turn my attention to, and I hope that I had it done today, but it'll be done tomorrow afternoon and on the internet, on the webpage, and I'll email them to you directly.
Thank you. John, rest of your...
Okay. Have two things. Well, first off, the workshop's April 3rd at 5:30. It'll be at the meeting room over beside the maintenance department at the FAR elevator. And just got off, hot off the press, these were released, I think, today. At least I got a notice on them today. And these are the new population estimates for 2013. And that's July of 2013. They're always a kind of a year behind. It's 125,099 people. And if you look at the changes yearly from 2000 to 2013, you'll see that the last year, 2012 to 2013, we had quite a bit of a bump. It's not up to what we used to be, but it's quite a bit more than the 411 in the year before. So things are picking up. We've seen that in permits. We've seen that in quite a few other things. So I think that things are picking up, the economy's picking up, and we're probably going to be a little bit more busy the next year.
Mr. Chairman?
They, they... Well, most of that, actually, they do publish that, and I haven't gotten deep into the estimates yet. They do publish some components of increase, and I'm going to be looking at what the migration is. I think most of that's probably net migration. We're at a point now where our natural increase, the difference between births and deaths, is getting quite low. So I would, I would assume that that increase is probably mostly due to net migration. Can you turn your mic on?
We used to talk about the school population, you know, back a while back. I'd be curious to know if our school population is following that trend as well, or staying the same, or going down, just...
Actually, what you did is you had a little bit of a decrease in net migration. When you have net migration, most of that, except for retirees, are coming in with kids. They're coming here for jobs, they're established families. You can see that in the migration pattern by age over the decades, and they're coming in with kids. We had a depression of that effect with the recession. So we're probably going to have five or six years where we will not have as many kids coming in with their parents. Now, kids are still being born in the county, and you're still getting additions that way, but the boom and the bust, or the boom and the increase for school-aged children due to net migration has been low over the past few years. This probably shows it's going to start picking up again. So any decrease that you've seen recently in school-aged children will probably be a thing of the past in another couple of years. We'll probably see quite a bit more school-aged children moving into the county and not just being born here.
If you're going to put this on your website, you might want to correct that spelling, yearly estimates.
Which one, yearly? What do I got?
Got an extra T in estimates.
Got an extra T in estimates.
Okay. Okay, I see what you're saying. Yeah, I like to say this was hot off the press. I did this within a rush job within a few minutes before the meeting.
Anything else, Joe?
That's all I have.
Does anyone else have anything?
Yes.
As we are seeing these renewals or extensions, I know, again, sometime in the past, we have discussed that. Do we want to call it a renewal or an extension? To me, that's two different things. If you're renewing something, you're renewing it with any current regulations that are in place. If you're extending something, it would be subject to any prior.
Yeah. If you talk about Mr. Sparks' property, or even the other one, any of them, you're correct. If it expires and there had not been a renewal, an extension, in other words, then yes, you can apply any new regulations. Mr. Sparks' property had a variance already established. Variances don't have a time limit. That's not something that's time, you know, limited. So that variance kept going. Everything else on that plat really still meets our regulations.
Well, like I said, this is something...
You are right, Tom.
It's just that we're not used to seeing... We did see this a few years back.
Yes.
But I just want to make sure as we go forward, we're doing politically correct terminology and whatnot.
Technically, technically, it is an extension and not a renewal.
Well... And then, secondly, do we have a limit of extensions or a limit of renewals? I knew we did or talked about it a while back. If we do, great. If we don't, great. I just want to make sure we're aware of that.
I think we've got in our regulations two renewals, but we might have changed that to more. And I'll have to talk to Doug on that because Doug handles that more than I do. Let me just point out that the state legislature is actually talking about if you have a plat that you... Or any development permit, and the plat is a development permit, if you have one that's approved, they're talking about extending that to 10 years in the state legislature right now. So that might trump anything we've got in the future.
Well, as we go forward and as we continue to make changes to our regulations, you know, we're making changes for a reason, if it's not going to be, you know, impacted.
Well, you've got to look at it in vesting. If you have somebody that's actually put some money into something and put some money into the ground, then that's a vesting of that development proposal. We've got provisions in zoning that allows that to continue as a... Even if it's non-conforming, allows that to continue because there was a vesting. And I think the minimum on that is that they have a stamped plan. And what you've got here are stamped plans, you know, by...
Right. I'm not taking positions, I'm just trying to formality. But back to what you said, a variance is outside of that, no matter what.
Yeah. That's correct. What I'm getting at is the... You can apply the new regulations, but you need to be careful not to apply them willy-nilly to something that's coming in as a renewal. I mean, there is a vesting there in an approved plat, and you're just getting a renewal or an extension, or whatever you want to call it. And if something's coming in new, definitely you apply the new regulations to whatever's coming in new. There's a lag there from people starting the process to completing the process, particularly in this economy. There are a few developers that just could not get anything going after the economy tanked, and they're now coming back. And you see from the population figures, things are coming back, and they're getting out there and starting them up again. So we're trying just to basically apply whatever was there before, if there was no major change, and just keep that going.
We are adjourned. I'm sorry.
One question. John, could you reiterate the training opportunities that are coming up? I think we've got one on...
Monday?
Yeah.
We've got one on Monday, and I've sent out several calls for people to RSVP. If you haven't done so already, we're kind of closed on that one because they're going to order the food tomorrow. And we might can sneak you in on the back door on something like that, but I've sent out several notices on the one Monday, and that's why I didn't bring it up today. There's one in May that's coming up, and I'll put that out again for anybody that wants to... That's not one put on by us, it's put on by the East Tennessee Development District Planners. There's one coming up in Oak Ridge in May, and I'll send out another notice and reminder on that. Beyond that, we just had one today, and I think five planning commissioners here went to that, one, two, three, four, five, yeah. And you can speak to that. It was... I thought it was a very good presentation.
It was good. Ed McMahon spoke at downtown Knoxville, and as usual, he did a superb job. He's an interesting man to listen to, and he always has some food for thought. And there was actually some new information that kind of sank into my brain today because he spoke about the shifting demographics and the different economies that we are currently in, and probably will... I think there's probably been some dramatic changes in our economy that will have some long-range impacts. So it was... No, he's out of DC or Maryland.
Urban Land Institute. And I will be developing more trainings over the period of the year, and my theme is going to be heavy on health, developing a presentation for the Tennessee Public Health Association at the end of April, and I'm going to be developing that more and more towards planning commissioners after that. So probably middle of the year I'll have that. And we've got some videos to show, so you won't have to listen to me all the time.
But if Ed McMahon comes around again, I'd highly recommend to try and fit it into your schedule. It was time well spent on my part, and I appreciate the showing that we had from the planning commission because we... As John said, we had five of us representing, so it was a good time. Thank you, gentlemen. We are adjourned.